And rest of the board members. Today, we have two members from the general county staff. We have Tracy Strunk, the Director of Zoning Evaluation from the Zoning Evaluation Division of Fairfax County Department of Planning and Development, and also Leanna O'Donnell. She's the Acting Director of the Planning Division for the Department of Planning and Development. And you'll notice that there were some changes, some mild changes to the original documents you received. That was feedback from the meeting managers on Friday, and we apologize for any inconvenience or confusion that may have had. The information you received initially was pretty voluminous, and we decided it was more appropriate to streamline for your magisterial districts and to get the topics in the kickoff. We do appreciate them coming. They are guests who we've asked to volunteer their time to come over as a part of the extension in the prepping of our CIP kickoff and process. And with that, I'll turn it over.
Good afternoon again. I'm Tracy Strunk. I'm the Director of the Zoning Evaluation Division, which is part of the Department of Planning and Development, which is a new name for us, which is the first thing on the side. So if you've seen us before as planning and zoning, this past July, we merged with the Office of Community Revitalization. And Barbara Byron, who was the Director of that and actually previously held my job in years past, is now the Director of Planning and Development. So really, basically, the same skill set, same roles, but new name, which we're all getting used to. We do have, and I just wanted to take a minute to kind of do a little background there. There's three divisions. The Zoning Administration Division, who you don't have here today, they're the people who handle the zoning ordinance itself. The Planning Division, which, who Leanna will be talking more about, which is the Comprehensive Plan, which is a guidance document. And our division, which is zoning evaluation. Some places, that's called current planning. So we basically evaluate the zoning cases that go to the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, and also the Board of Zoning Appeals, although that is probably less important for you all. We also, when we merged with OCR, we brought in the Urban Centers and Commercial Revitalization Sections, which were the groups that used to work in OCR. And so those are now part of our division as well. We provide professional review and recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, and I guess that's the piece I'd like to stress there. Everything that we do, or the vast majority of what we do, goes to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors through a public hearing process. So we provide professional information for them, professional review. What we don't do is the by right piece of development. So all of the houses, or someone's knocking down a house and building a new house on that site, which I'm in the town of Vienna, that's happening everywhere, that doesn't come through our office. That's another group in the office. So those sorts of numbers about how many new houses are just getting turned over, we don't necessarily have. Most of the development in the county probably does come through a rezoning process, but there are still some plots of land out there where someone can subdivide and build by right. So there's not too much of that. So most of what we do, most new development, as opposed to replacement development, does come through our office. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Leanna for a little bit more background, and then I'll come back and talk through some numbers with you.
Thank you, Tracy. Again, I'm Leanna O'Donnell. I'm the Acting Director of the Planning Division in the Department of Planning and Development. I wanted briefly to just review with the board the difference between the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinance. I know many of you are probably very familiar with this, but just for the benefit of the public and folks that might be listening, the Comprehensive Plan is a guide for decision-makers to use when looking at land development and natural resources in the county. It provides recommendations for land use based on use and intensity, and also supplies general policies. The Policy Plan section of the Comprehensive Plan focuses on countywide policies for land use, transportation, heritage resources, public facilities, general policies along those lines. So what we have in the Comprehensive Plan are, we have the Policy Plan, and then we have four area plans. The county is divided geographically into those four area plans, and then further into community planning sectors, where you can find specific land use recommendations for a property in the county. We also have a Comprehensive Plan map that is part of the larger planning documents that is used. And then, again, more specific recommendations, if appropriate, in those area plan documents. The zoning ordinance is regulatory and contains the requirements for uses, standards for setbacks, height, things like that. So when a developer comes in to develop a piece of property, they look to the Comprehensive Plan, and staff looks to the Comprehensive Plan to see if the proposed change that they're looking at meets that Comprehensive Plan recommendation or not, as part of that review. There are a couple of ways that the Comprehensive Plan can be amended. The Board of Supervisors can authorize a planning study, a larger planning study, look at a larger area, or a site-specific plan amendment. They can do that at any time, and those are then added to our work program. We also have a site-specific plan amendment process that's ongoing now. Some of you may be familiar with the former area plans reprocess, where we would look at the North County for a cycle, and then we go to the South County districts, where anyone could submit a nomination to change the plan recommendation for a property. We are now about to begin the South County site-specific plan amendment process. So those South County districts, you'll be hearing from your school staff and from us as that gets underway. We just recently had the deadline for that completed. What happens with those is that those nominations that are reviewed by community task forces are then taken forward to the Planning Commission and Board for addition to our work program, and then we would look at evaluating the proposed change. So the Board of Supervisors authorizes our work program, and then any land use studies that are added to that work program, and that reforms what we're focused on. And again, as Tracy mentioned, those go through, those will also go through public hearings with the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. Land use studies will also typically have a task force formed by the board member for that district, and we will have a series of meetings for those land use studies and provide them with information and work towards recommendations for those larger studies as well. Okay, so as part of the planning process, as I mentioned, for our planning studies, we will often have a task force that's put together by the board member. What we do then is we look at the proposed changes to land use and intensity. The Fairfax County Public School staff will provide us and those task forces with information about the schools that serve that area that's under study, the capacity of the schools, projected enrollment for the schools, and then what the proposed changes that we're reviewing as part of the planning study would mean for impacts to those schools. And then we work together throughout those studies to look at how we can work together on recommendations, for example, specific recommendations for plan guidance for a particular area, if there's a school, a school impact that needs to be highlighted for when rezoning applications come in. You know, our recent studies that we've worked on, the school staff will come and give presentations to our task forces, and will review the information that they provide to staff in their formal memos. But we are often asking them to come and present the information and answer questions from the community about what the proposed changes would mean. And then for zoning, I'll go back to Tracy.
Similarly, similarly. I can't get that word out. We work pretty closely with Jessica and her folks when we do the zoning applications. So with every rezoning request that comes in for residential, we get a memo, and we get information from the school staff about what the expected generation of students would be from the various unit types and the various numbers that come in, where those students would go to school, what the capacity of those schools are that they would be going to, understanding that things change over time. And I'll talk a little bit more about sort of some of the implications of that in a minute. We also, if we're in an area where we are looking for a school site, we'll work pretty closely with them about if we have a potential school site, whether it's a good place for it, what sorts of concerns there might be for transportation and active recreation and things like that. When we were working in Tysons, we had a number of areas where we were looking at, potentially even, we had a site we thought, well, maybe this, maybe we could fit a school into one of the office buildings in this area. And we worked very closely with the school staff about what would you need? Would you want the traffic to be co-located or separated? Would you need, what kind of access would you need to fields and things like that? So we work pretty closely on specifics. And then also, as we're seeing things come in, if we're seeing, I'll talk a little bit about how we're seeing some of our mixed-use areas turn over to a higher percentage of residential, what are the impacts going to have if that's what we're seeing come in at the zoning stage? So we do work very closely with them through all those different stages and have a good relationship. One thing that we are working on and trying to do more is sort of tracking of development. It's something that everybody wants. Schools want it. The police call me all the time, they want to know. The wastewater people want to know. And we are, I'm sure you've heard maybe of the PLUS system, which will be replacing our land use tracking computer systems that go on. So we're working pretty closely with those groups to make sure that we can get that system set up, so it will give us even better information than we're getting now, because that's always a question we got. Well, when is it coming? How much has happened? What's coming through? So we're trying, we have, the system we have now is 20-plus years old, and when we try and get information out of it, we see sort of where the deficiencies are. So we're working to make sure we have some good information coming out of the next system that we get. So I say this every year, and each year I bold it and italics it and that, but development is market-driven, especially when you start looking at our side. Leanna's side with the comp plans, you do sometimes get a little bit more, hey, this is something we want to drive development. But on the current planning side and the development review side, we respond to what is brought into us. So we often say, and you saw on a previous slide, that zoning implements the Comprehensive Plan. And that's true in the sense that we check zonings against the Comprehensive Plan and use them as a guide, and we evaluate them using that. What it doesn't mean is that we use zoning to go out and make development happen. So with a very few public-private partnerships aside, we are contingent upon what, our work is dependent on what a developer brings into us. So when someone's ready to develop a piece of land, they will come in, and then we will measure it against all of the various standards we have, and the Comprehensive Plan, and the policies and things. But we are not going out and saying, okay, let's build a housing development here, because the Comprehensive Plan says we should have a housing development here. We do sometimes go out and build public facilities, and we go out and build roads and things like that, but the amount of residential coming in really is contingent upon what the developers want to bring in. We're still seeing a lot of this, if you've been here the last couple of years, is a little bit repetitive. We're definitely seeing both in Fairfax County and nationally, frankly, a drive towards higher-density development in areas that have transit and bikability and walkability. That's what people are looking for, and we're still, we're seeing that here, too. The COG has said, the Council of Governments has recently put out some housing targets, and they are recommending regionally 320,000 housing units to be added in the region by 2030. So there's a need. People are moving here, and that's not that we're saying we want all of these people to come here. That's a number that's based on, this is who is moving to this region, and we need a place for them to live. So that's kind of the side we're looking for there. We are seeing a little bit of a shift towards residential in our mixed-use areas. So generally, when we have a Comprehensive Plan, it'll say we have a target of maybe half-residential and half-commercial. As people are coming in, we're seeing a little bit of a shift where people are putting more residential in. And that, as you've heard before, causes a need for additional public infrastructure, schools, parks, community centers, police, fire, and that. The biggest example of that is probably Tysons, obviously, where when it was originally planned, we did not expect there to be people living there, and now we do. And so we are, we have a very robust plan for finding places for public facilities, and we've had a lot of success for that. That's all tracked in the annual report on Tysons that's done. But also similar, you'll see it, and the picture on the slide here is actually the Palmeroy site that was adopted, that was approved this year, where it was an area where the Comprehensive Plan expected a higher percentage of residential. We expected mixed use. We're getting mixed use, but we really expected there to be more commercial in that mix, and that's not what's coming forward. And so that was an area where we said, you know what? This is more residential than we thought would be in this area. We need a school site, and we need some contributions towards that. And so this zoning case gave the school site, which you can see in the corner there in white, and then the other developments in the area have contributed, are contributing funds as they come in to development. So I'll talk a little bit about the proffer legislation in a minute. We are starting to see office. It's not just residential, especially in metro areas. So we are seeing people building new office buildings. Some of what we're seeing with that is they're moving towards more metro. They want to be in the shiny new building on the metro station. And so what that's actually doing is freeing up some of the older office kind of in the edges. It's not totally freeing it up. There's still, you know, a fair amount of use for that. And we're starting to see more and more people looking at reusing those buildings. They're not all appropriate for residential. You obviously have the school example in Bailey's. There's a private school in Tysons, and we're seeing now a lot of people interested in the elderly housing and the continuing care facilities in some of those older office buildings, but, which is kind of the next point. A lot of what we've done, and even a lot of these developments that we're going to talk about, also included a component of some version of elderly housing, whether that's independent living or assisted living and nursing care, or a continuing care facility like Greensboro Village or the Erickson site that was just approved. So we're definitely seeing that push. I've mentioned this before as well. We're seeing a push towards townhouse and mid-rise style development, where we might have expected high-rise development. So that obviously has some land use implications. It's fewer number of units generally. They're generally larger units. You know, sometimes it's a, we're getting more of a mix of housing in an area, so it's kind of a, you know, case by case, plus and minuses. There's good things about it, and there's bad things about it. It's a little bit more difficult from a land use perspective to sort of fit some things in. If you're using more land for townhouses than if you have just a single multifamily building, and you can have a nice park next to it. The example that I have up there actually is in process. The picture on the left, the black and white picture, Graham Road or Lowman's Plaza, depending on how long you've been around. I still call it Lowman's Plaza. The half of that, where the giant is, that's down on Route 50, heading towards Seven Corners. And half of that was approved a couple of years ago for a multifamily building. They are now coming back in and looking at doing townhouses, which is the picture on the right. It's actually gotten even better than that since then. It has not been filed yet, but that'll be coming in soon. So that's one where we're going from 210 multifamily units to the proposal has around 170 townhouse units. So it's a different type of unit in the area. You know, it'll have different challenges, but it's definitely something that we're seeing come through. The proffer legislation, we still call it the new proffer legislation, although it's been amended. To back up, in proffers, for anyone listening, or those of you who haven't had the joy of dealing with them, are a sort of Virginia thing, where a developer can make commitments to offset impacts that they're proposing. In 2016, the state passed some new legislation that significantly limited what types of proffers could be requested, specifically cash proffers and specifically what they called off-site proffers. And the map there does show the areas that are exempt from that, which were basically our higher-density areas. And as you'll see later in some of my slides, the vast majority of our development is actually in those areas. So from that standpoint, you know, most of our development is business as usual. So our activity centers are metro corridors and that. This law did not have much impact. Where it did have an impact was the single-family detached, the smaller areas, and frankly, things like Lowman's Plaza, because that's not in an activity center. And if we see older commercial areas redeveloping in the future, that's going to impact them. So everyone, there were a lot of problems with the law that I won't go into. One of the biggest ones being that it was very sort of unclear who could violate the law, because the legislation didn't define that particularly well. So they did some amendments. They went back. We did manage to get some cases through in the interim, but they, as of July 1st, 2019, they have amended the law. It didn't actually change the basics of the law. So previously, and I have it there, the cash contributions must create a need in excess of existing capacity at the time of the zoning, which is very hard to deal with, obviously, because today you might have excess capacity. But by the time the development, again, development is market-driven, by the time the houses actually get built, there might not be excess capacity. What it did do was clear up that question about who can violate the law, which puts us in a much better standpoint of asking. The Board of Supervisors in writing are the only ones who can violate the law. And the other thing that it did was affirmatively state that if the developer signed their proffers, then by definition, the proffers are reasonable and acceptable. So we're still sort of working out what that means, because they, we can now accept cash proffers. There was a question about that. But it's still a little sort of iffy about how far can you go asking for that? But it's a much, it's a much better process. It's a much, we think things will go along much more normally in the future. And we've seen a fair number of cases come in and be filed. So jury is still out about how all the details will work out, but in general, we're in a much better position than we were in the last couple of years for the proffer legislation, if you hear about that. Those are all proffer cases. In terms of sort of where we're seeing the activity, this is our countywide, what's the name of that?
Concept for Future Development.
Concept for Future Development. And the areas that are our activity centers, you can see Tysons, obviously, in the Tyson-shaped little black blob in the center there, the metro corridors along the metro, our suburban centers, which are the magenta areas, and our community business centers, which are sort of the little old commercial red dots. So those are our major activity centers. That's generally where we're seeing things come in. Most of our activity is still in the Silverline corridor, Reston and Tysons. We are starting to see 28 in the Westfields area, information come in there. Richmond Highway and Embark a little bit is coming in, and probably more as the BRT gets moving. We're going to see more of that. And we're starting to see, and this is, you know, something that, you know, adding two dwelling units in the numbers we're talking about here is not a big deal, but we are sort of starting to see people go back and look at subdivisions that were developed in the 80s and saying, hey, a lot of times what you'd see is maybe the person who lived on the land would keep an extra-large lot for themselves and subdivide the stuff around them. And we're seeing actually a number of people come in and say, hey, here's two acres, and it's zoned our two, and I'll just re, now this person has died off or moved on, and let's come back and kind of take that big lot and subdivide it again. So we're seeing a little bit of that starting to happen in some of the, we always say, the easy pieces have been developed already, so. Rest, which is just kind of that. So in terms of our numbers, which I'm sure you want to see, I looked at, this is fiscal year 2019. So this was ending as of June of 2019, which means that everything, we had a huge month in July and September this year. So stay tuned till next year, because we got a lot of numbers coming in next year. But we entitled, which is just the term that means it went through the zoning process, just under 12,000 dwelling units in fiscal 2019. So that was from July of 18 to June of 19. And if you happen to look at the first version of this slide, this, of the slide deck, this one is totally different, because for some reason, my Excel spreadsheet did something really odd. But the vast majority of what we're seeing, which goes again to my next slide about where the things are happening, is multifamily units. There is a slight quirk in our zoning ordinance in that multifamily, of course, means multifamily, but we also count stacked townhouses or units like that as multifamily based on the zoning ordinance definition. That's actually one of the things we're working in the PLUS system to get a more refined way to track that. So right now, the only way to kind of go back and pull that out is to do it by hand, which I have not done. It's not that many. I mean, most of the multifamily really are multifamily, either mid or high-rise apartments. But you can see almost all of what we do is, have gotten as multifamily. About 4% in single-family attached, and just a very few, 23, 23 units, single-family detached new units. Again, if it's a piece of land that is already zoned for residential development, and someone just wants to come in and build that without coming through us, they can do that. So this isn't to say that there were only 23 units, single-family detached units built in the county. And of course, anything that was approved before is still sort of underway now. And I would say that's an estimate. You know, some of our developments that come in don't have hard numbers, so it's a, it's a guess. So in terms of where they are, I kind of tried to look at, and we have a whole lot of different terms out there that sort of float around, but we're kind of, I wanted to look at what's happening sort of near metro or close to metro. So my definition, if you will, more than half, 67%, so almost three-quarters, is really within a half a mile or right, maybe even right at a half a mile of a metro station. So that's, I mean, the vast majority of what we do is right at the metro station. And when you add in sort of what we call the sort of semi-metro, metro, or something in that half-mile to a mile range, so something that, I, for example, live in that range from the Vienna metro station. So I'm not on the metro. I'm in a single-family detached house, but if I'm taking the metro, I usually walk. So once you add that in, it's really, it's almost 100%. It's like 97% of our development is, that we approved in the past year is within, really within a mile of a metro station. Or, and that does include future metro stations that aren't built yet. So some of the, we're seeing the Phase 2 Silverline stuff start to come in. And again, most of what's not in those areas then falls into these other metro, these other activity centers. So in this case, we had, it's Fairfax Horner, Lake Anne, McLean, but you would see some other, you know, Seven Corners would show up in that if, you know, when we get some stuff in there, Skyline might be coming through in the next couple of years. So pretty much everything we do is targeted in those areas, and that's by intent. That's where the county wants to put things, because that's where we have infrastructure and roads. And especially when you're talking about putting residential, and I know transportation isn't directly your issue, but it is, because you have to get the kids from their houses to the schools. If we're putting housing in a place like Tysons that has developed transportation infrastructure to serve the office, it's basically going to be able to handle the residential, because of the, sort of the, it's the flip side of the development. So that's good news. And then just a very few sort of in these other little scattered bits around the county. And again, you'll see a few more of those in the next year, as we start to see the hangover from the proffer legislation wear off, but it's still just, it's not going to be a huge number of units. And just because it's interesting, this is sort of where the things are. Please don't take this to mean that if you don't see your supervisory district up here that there's nothing happening in your area. This is just what got approved. In particular, Providence, which is Tysons, we had a lot come through in July and September. So you'll see more of those next year. But this really, it's the, sort of the next wave of the silver line. So it's the Hunter Mill and the Drainsville and those sorts of things. And of course, things sort of take a while to filter through, but you can, that is really why you're seeing those numbers up there. And that is the zoning part. So I'm going to turn it over. We actually did it slightly backwards, actually, because Leanna's Comprehensive Plan really comes before the zoning. But in terms of thinking long-term about where development is coming, my stuff is sort of almost done in some sense, and what she's doing is where you need to focus on next, so.
I highlighted for you three recently approved land use studies to review. This is not a comprehensive list of all of the plan amendments that we, that our division was working on this year and that went to the Board of Supervisors, and I'm happy to answer questions about others. But this is, I was, I'm going to review the recent study in the Merrifield Suburban Center. We completed another in the Westfields area in the Sully District, Land Unit J of the Dallas Suburban Center, and then in Laconia this year. The final phase of that study was, went to the Board of Supervisors for approval. We also have two studies that are under review that I wanted to let you know about, and I'm glad to review those briefly at the end as well, but we do have two that are underway that we're working on evaluating as well. The first is the Merrifield Suburban Center study. It was focused on the Inova site, the former ExxonMobil headquarters site, and also property in Fairview Park, both the northern and southern parts of Fairview Park. These came out of nominations that came in from the North County cycle of the site-specific plan amendment process. So they were joined together, and a task force was created. So they were joined together and a task force was created to look at these proposals. And this just went to the board, the plan amendment went to the board this fall, and then a rezoning for the Inova portion of this, which was on the former ExxonMobil property, also was approved by the Board of Supervisors this fall. In total, the, both of them together, the comprehensive plan added options for up to about 1,800 residential units. We've included here the potential student yield numbers that were reviewed as part of that plan amendment provided by Jessica's staff. Both of these areas are planned for office uses and non-residential uses, and these amendments added options for residential use, which we're seeing, you'll see in some of these other studies as well, sort of a look at areas that are planned primarily for office without opportunities for other uses and an interest in the market kind of coming forward. And we're looking at some of these areas for that introduction of residential use. The Inova site was approved for a mix of uses, academic, research, office, and supporting housing and retail and hotel uses with plan guidance about the environmental areas as well, as well as language about schools. And this is, this is, I would say it's standard for some of our larger land use studies where when we're looking at additional residential development potential, we work with Jessica and her staff. If we think we should put forward draft plan language that says some, you know, might say, if the county determines there's a need for a school site or, you know, an additional fair share contribution to purchase of a site or a building, we get that in there so that then when a development proposal comes forward, Tracy's group has that guidance that they can use when they're talking to developers about implementing those plans. So the Inova property added, the comprehensive plan now includes an option for up to 1,000 units at their, at their ultimate phase. And then Fairview Park was up to about 840 units for that, for that plan amendment. And then the second, the second one is Land Unit J of the Dulles Suburban Center. This is the Westfields area, Westfields Office Park. You may be familiar with that area. There's also some new development that's been going on. There's a Wegmans there. There's some new residential construction that's been, that's underway now. We, the board approved an update to the larger Dulles Suburban Center plan last year, and that's shown here. The Westfields area is circled in blue. It's in the southern portion of the Dulles Suburban Center. So the Westfields Corporate Center wanted, and the board agreed, to look at, a more comprehensive look particularly for that land unit. So that was pulled out, and we looked at that after the larger study was completed. They put together kind of a conceptual plan to add residential use to the area as well as some additional retail, retail opportunity. Again, this area is planned primarily for office. We've had two plan amendments in the past five years to look at specific sites and the introduction of residential use. So, so given that, you know, we were asked to look at a more comprehensive look at that larger area, that entire land unit, to try to get ahead of some of these site-specific plan amendment nominations coming in so that we can look at the impacts in total. And that helps us particularly with schools when we're working with Jessica's staff to get plan language in for that entire land unit so that, so that the development proposals that come in under this new option, we're talking to each one of them about, about fair share contributions, opportunities for school sites so that, so that, because we have a, we have a sense of the total number of residential units that are now allowed. The guidance for this study, it's about 4,200 new units. Again, this is long-range. We don't control the timing of when these come in. There are three, there are three zoning applications that have come in since approval. They were, we were aware of those during the study. This, these units are divided in the comprehensive plan by unit type, about two-thirds multifamily, one-third single-family attached. And the idea with this plan is that the new development is focused sort of around three village centers in the area. One where the, one where the new Wegmans, near where the new Wegmans is, an existing shopping center area, and then an area on the western portion of the land unit. And again, we had a task force for this one. We've had task forces for all three of these, and school staff does participate with us in terms of those, that outreach and presenting information to the community as well as part of these studies. The third is the Lincolnia Community Business Center, and it's newly designated last year as a commercial revitalization area as well. And again, this is the same, kind of the same theme in terms of introducing residential use into areas that were not originally planned for residential use. So this plan added an option for approximately 1,400 residential uses, mostly focused on what's called an opportunity area, which is the eastern portion of the CBC. So, so that was adopted this year. And again, kind of introducing the residential uses into these areas that are, that are not necessarily recognized for those uses currently. Finally, and I don't have a graphic here on this version, but we have, as I mentioned, two studies. We have one ongoing in the McLean CBC in the Drainsville District. Last year, the community and a task force worked closely with a consultant to develop a vision plan for the downtown McLean, the CBC area, which identified, again, opportunities for additional residential use generally. We have seen there three plan amendments over the past few years, again, for residential. So this is an opportunity to look more comprehensively at those impacts as we're going through that planning process. There's a task force that's been put together, and we're currently working through impacts and drafting recommendations for that study. The West Falls Church Transit Station area, the area immediately south of the metro station is under review also, and that came out of our North County site-specific plan amendment process. That involves the Womata property, a Virginia Tech and UVA-owned property, and then the City of Falls Church owns property there as well, which they are redeveloping. So that, that's a study that's underway, and we're working with a task force there as well. I think that's, that's it for kind of my overview, so we're open to questions.
Good. Thank you very much, Leanna, and I do want to thank you and Tracy again for volunteering your time to come and present us this overview. For the board's edification, as you know, Virginia, the Commonwealth is a Dillon Rule Commonwealth, which has ramifications here. We do work very well with county staff. You've heard that we are involved in the process, as has been stated and discussed with this governing body. We do have active participation on the Planning Schools Committee for the Subcommittee for the Planning Commission. That is coming to a conclusion. There's been a lot of progress that's been made, perhaps, you know, full report out of those changes and the impacts and the comprehensive plan. The recommendations that are coming from that body to the Board of Supervisors is pretty significant, we feel. We feel that working together, we've been able to identify the need and how to address the need. You've heard some of these yields, and that is our average yield. We've made through recommendations in the process of looking at regional areas and more impact because the difference between those agreed-upon previous calculations and formulary approaches, including the proffers. So there are many opportunities. We've been working really well together on those. I can't thank the staff of the county enough for working with us to make sure that we're all communicating, collaborating, but certainly at the elected level, at the board level, between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, certainly that's discussions you've had with us in other work sessions. But I did want to go ahead and thank them for coming to brief us, and we're certainly available to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Yes, we are very grateful for the report and happy to see faces I haven't seen in a long time. So I have so far Ms. McLaughlin and then Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. I represent the Braddock District, and I know the two major projects, the One University and then the independent living projects, those weren't reflected, but I guess they're probably not quite at the stage yet for you to be profiling them in today's presentation. Impact-wise on schools, pretty much the One University one is simply the 249, I believe, affordable dwelling. It's actually 100 of those will be for senior residents, so it's really only about 146. So impact-wise for Braddock District, since we're so densely and already developed, there's not a lot of impact directly from our families. But my concern is something that Jeff Plattenberg and I have talked about for some time, and as one of the board members who's going to be returning for the next four years, even when it's not in my district, obviously, we, all 12 of us on the board have a responsibility for the entire school division and the budgetary impacts that development have on making sure we then have school-building sites to house and then also educate the children. So the more that we build in this county, these multifamily dwelling units, we have to get our projections as accurate as possible, and then we do have to make sure that both the School Board and the Board of Supervisors have sort of a shared message to the General Assembly about what we need to do to protect our quality of life here in Fairfax County when we continue to have this type of very, very dense development. So I think that's my greatest concern is what have we been doing to date in assessing our accuracy for the projected student enrollment? Because Mr. Plattenberg and I have had extensive conversations about this, that right now, the formula that the county requires the school system to use is not necessarily in alignment with what our Fairfax County Public Schools' projections are. So there's the county formula that we have to do for the developers, and then there's the school formula we use for our student enrollment projections. And where this became a problem was Fairfax Villa with the One University development. And one of the things that I felt very strongly about was in order to check our math and make sure, is this formula serving us well, or are we continuing down a path now with this incredible growth? And I think if Ms. Strauss's district in Drainsville, Tysons, which also then, of course, will include Ms. Palchek's Providence District, and certainly down the road, the Route 1 corridor with Ms. Corbett Sanders, we can't get this wrong. We are so hard-pressed to fund and educate our kids, get them out of trailers, and if we find ourselves that we can't even address the trailer issue because now we're scrambling to build facilities or put in modulars, I just, that's my, my great concern. So I guess I would say, if you could all speak to where are we on this formula, because it cannot be about the developers. It has got to be about our quality of life and making sure that we've got good projection numbers so that we know how many students to anticipate and then to get the proffers that should come with it.
Well, Ms. McLaughlin, that's a good point that you raised, and that's exactly what I was referring to when we talk about the Schools Committee. One of the things that we did and was acknowledged by the Planning Commission, members that were on that committee, and as well as the School Board members who served as liaison to the committee, was the articulation discussion about the county-wide average and how that was developed. And for crass over simplification, a county-wide average, being a legacy system, seemed like a logical approach to treat all development in terms of proffers, to treat all development adequately and fairly from one part of the county versus the other. As time has gone on, the recognition of some of these centers, some of these areas of high density and the type of growth and change, therefore, begat the conversation about the change of that, that average that's being used. Certainly, and some people gave us the same questions, well, how come the publication of the document that you have has a student yield of X amount when in your forecast for your CIP, you're using a different student count? And that was based upon what we're experiencing, some of the things that we talk about in our CFP process. So that language has been addressed, it has been identified, it is moving forward as a recommendation. That doesn't help with areas of zoning past. I will say that when you mention not only the school site, and some of the conversation that we had here was about school site, we are working with some of the Board of Supervisor members directly. I can tell you that Supervisor Faust, Supervisor Gross, and the Providence District Member-Elect has been really key about talking not only about the potential for site, but also for construction of a capital facility. In the past, it had been just looking for a proffer site. So with the recognition that in these revitalization areas and in these centers, the impacts and the yields and the shift that's happening across the county, because it's not, it's not in the perfect placement of where we might have some existing space, it's in areas that are in high demand. You heard the report, within one-half mile, 87%, whatever the high percentage that was given, within one-half mile of a high transit area, so metro and so forth. So there has been work that's been done. I think, I think there's an opportunity at a broader level through liaison between the two boards, but certainly that's out of my lane. But Tracy, if you have anything you might want to add, I tried to cover as much I could.
Yeah, I think, I think that covers it. I mean, we, we use the projections that we get from, from Mural's office, and there's a lot of history in sort of how they came to be that way, and we've certainly heard a lot about that. And so I think the committee that's working on that, I mean, the other thing I'd say about it is there's, there's a lot of sensitivity in terms of, in areas, there's a lot of sensitivity in areas where we want to see development and where we want to see new residential development to overloading the proffer package on that. So there's, there's, everything has to be paid for. How, who's the balance of that, where is it coming from, is something that people are interested in, so. And by that, I mean if, I guess I mean what I just said, so.
So that was a good point. If I could piggyback on that, that reminded me of one of the discussions that we had in the Mason District. When you saw the number of units and the size of the actual units themselves, the number of dwelling units that was 168 or whatever it was now, in the initial conversations, it was much higher density. So we have been working constantly, and these assigned actually task forces are a part of that. And in those conversations, in the public meetings with the public process coming in, there's a lot of push and pull to find what I call the right mix or the balance for the math equation to work, not only for the developer, but for the Magisterial District. As I keep saying, the opportunity for schools, we've been included more now than we ever had before, and I really am grateful for that. But I think the opportunity for schools, it was great for us, and within the past six years, I think it's been phenomenal, the amount of inclusion that we've had. But again, that's an example of an area where it initially started out, and there wasn't much discussion about that. There wasn't much, as far as the schools, there was the initial yield part, but having the public meetings, having the school impact discussed, having the School Board member and the Board of Supervisor member involved has been a push in the right direction. I do believe there's an opportunity for more.
So I don't, I don't, maybe I didn't do, no, I asked a question, and it actually didn't get answered. So maybe I didn't ask it very well, so I'm going to restate my question. Where are we adjusting the formula?
Vega, have three minutes.
Ms. Kizkemara, we ask, we make our statements in three minutes, and we ask a question, then we wait for staff to answer the question. This question didn't get answered, that doesn't negate me from being able to get my question answered, that's part of my turn. So I'm asking my question to be answered, it has not been answered yet. So it's not about a go-back, it's, I asked a question, maybe they didn't understand what I was asking. Where are we on the formula for projecting the number of students out of a proposal being revised? Because I understand the school was using one formula, the county said you have to use one universal formula, and I was told by your department that that then creates a disconnect between how many Fairfax County schools thinks they're going to get and what gets told to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. What's happened with that?
That's been recommended as a part of the Subcommittee work that's been done with the Zoning Commission, and I believe Ms. Palchek and also Ms. Evans served as liaisons on that committee, or where I might want to comment about what that status of it is. It's in the recommended item that went from the Planning Commission. I believe it's been sent to the, tomorrow's the last.
Well, we're having a meeting tomorrow to review it, and they told us that the recommendations would be voted on at the next meeting. So the discussion is tomorrow night, and then a final vote in, I guess, January. Is that your understanding, Dalia?
That is my understanding. I think it's been a while since our last meeting, so we'll see tomorrow night. I believe we shared the last recommendations, but perhaps those can be shared again. I know it's been a while, but there hasn't been much movement since the last set of recommendations to move this forward. And keep in mind, those recommendations then, those are recommendations to the Board of Supervisors that then have to be approved by the board, that being at the policy level, and then there will be all of the work on the ground to actually start to implement and do that work.
So the process is, it's a recommendation going to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has to agree to support the recommendations, and that's what they're going to vote on. Then they'll send over to the Board of Supervisors, will require another vote. And in the meantime.
Well, it's actually at the Schools Committee at this point. So what I would like to ask is there, I think we're going to have a
So, what I would like to ask is, there, I think we're going to have additional questions on that, Ms. McLaughlin. And if with the go-back, you haven't had your question answered, I'd like to come back to that, because we did discuss that a little bit in the meeting manager meeting as well. Okay? Ms. Strauss?
Okay, thank you very much for this presentation. And I do think our eight new colleagues who are coming on the board are going to need a refresh of course, because this is very, very helpful. I have a next steps question, but you can probably answer some of this right now on Slide eight, which shows the residential developments, which is very, very helpful, if we can pull that back up. I would like, for the record, for our new colleagues, no, it's the, it's the map of the county that shows, there it is, okay, there we go. I would like to know what the land use, in other words, how much is, you know, the R level for each one of those. You know, the low density, is that two acres, is it R1, R2, what have you? And if we can have those definitions for low density, in other words, how do you define that? Suburban neighborhood, what is the zoning for that? And then the suburban center, I had not heard that. And I don't know, you can probably, very quickly, just give me an answer for that. And then I do have one more question. But I think for the record, we also need that, because it's very helpful.
Yes, we'd be glad to forward, we have descriptions in the concept for future development for each of these categories. So, we'd be glad to follow up and forward those. But you're correct, the low density, the low-density residential areas, I'm sorry, I'm turning around and looking, in the kind of the light green, those are the lowest. I mean, that's where you're looking at five, two to five to ten acre lots typically. And then the suburb, oh, thank you, and then the suburban neighborhoods are, you know, where you're going to see more, like the three to fours or the five to eights and that sort of thing. But I'd be glad to forward you the definitions.
Okay, and suburban center? That's the first name, what, how do you define a suburban center?
The suburban centers are identified as areas where you typically will see employment, employment centers there, and then non-residential uses. And so, that's where we are seeing a lot of this interest now in residential development. You'll see some of our recent, more recent studies are looking at introducing residential uses into these suburban centers, where, for example, along, around Dulles Airport, that's the Dulles Suburban Center, which before now was planned primarily for non-residential uses. And so, so there is, I think, we're seeing a trend in terms of looking at some of the introduction of residential uses into some of those suburban centers that were not typically planned for suburban uses.
Right, and it's, so Dulles Innovation Station, right now, because that's where we're seeing a lot of interest. Is that on this map currently defined as a suburban center? Because that's where we're seeing.
It's a, it's a transit station area, which here, let's see, the northern, the southern portion of the transit area there, south of the metro station, is part of the Dulles Suburban Center. And so is the northern part, but within the Dulles Suburban Center, we have a transit station area designation, which is for higher-intensity mixed use by the transit station, yes.
Yeah, and I guess, for Mr. Plattenberg, the area that we've been told has like a proposal for ten thousand more units, is that on this map? Is it currently a suburban center, is it a transit? I mean, where is that on this map?
Oh, in Land United, yeah. So, that's just south of the metro station, in the transit station area in the suburban center.
So, it's in both.
Okay, so it is in both, okay. Then the last question that I have is that, as you say, by rate development and changes where little houses go down, big houses go up, and in sort of the greater Tyson's area where we're seeing continued growth and people wanting to live closer to whatever your business centers are, which is a good thing, but means we have to figure out what we can do with schools. In terms of proffers and where we know we're going to have to add on or build new schools, I am assuming that we still cannot bundle proffers, put them into the bank, saying, for example, because I do believe we'll have to add on to McLean High School, that can we save money as we go forward to help pay for that? Or it's like the jogging trail at Franklin Sherman, which was lovely, but that doesn't help us with actual school construction. I know we asked many years ago, your predecessor, Mr. Plattenberg, and we were not able to bundle proffer money to go towards what we know is something we're going to have to do down the line.
It's not an easy question to answer. In general, there is legislation at the state level that talks about how long you have to spend the money, so, or you have to, or it gets transferred over into a general fund type thing. So, there are provisions in state law now, and we've used them in a couple of different places, where if someone had proffered money for a very specific purpose that was not needed anymore, there is a way that the board can hold a public hearing and reallocate that money for something else. We've done it once that I know of with park funds that had been designated for a specific park, and then were not needed for that park. So, they, you can't just take it and, you can't use that process to take money that was given for roads, for example, and give it to schools or vice versa. It has to be somehow tied, you know, for a similar type purpose. But there is, we do have a little bit of flexibility if there's some sort of old money floating around there that we think we could use for a similar type purpose. But in general, there is, there is basically a clock on how long money can sit out there. So, it's sort of a question of, can you get a little bit of money from one development and a little bit of money from another development? Yes, you can certainly do that. The problem is, of course, if you're getting money from five houses, and money from five houses, and money from five houses, that's not going to be enough to do the big project. So, we try and look, we do have, we try and look for things that are going to be happening that we know we're going to need money for, so we can use the money before the clock runs out, for example. So, that's kind of the way we try and split that baby in the zoning process.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And my last question, and again, you can answer this later on, is, I know that you had talked about better reporting of progress on the comprehensive plan, and what, in other words, what we are looking at for needs from the school system. And our CIP does speak to that, and that's always, you know, high concern, because it takes so long to get enough money to actually build the school. And, you know, how long, the better the reporting, and of course, sometimes it just depends also on the economy. So, it is, it is hard. So, the better we can report and plan accurately, the better we are. So, thank you all very much for this presentation, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, and thank you all for all you do. I know that you have had, just done a yeoman's effort, especially in the context of the Planning Commission Schools Committee, and we really do appreciate it. I think that the collaboration there is an excellent example of how the two systems should work together. Couple of comments. One is, I think that it would be helpful to elevate the conversation so that it's not schools talking to Planning Commission, and then Planning Commission talking to the board of supervisors. I will be making a recommendation, if I have the support of my colleagues, to have a more of a peer-to-peer conversation between the board of supervisors and the school board on these important issues, especially when we look at, you guys do an excellent job of planning, but we have the issue of aggregates. And once the, you know, once a subway station goes live, or once we have BRT going, then all these individual projects that have been approved start turning dirt really quickly. We're already seeing that on Huntington Avenue, where all of these projects, I added them up, they're in aggregate, will result in a number of schools being overcrowded very quickly. And so, I think we have to have some mechanism at looking at this data in aggregate and having some way of, I don't know if it requires a change in legislation to deal with the proffers along those, in that area, or do something else. Secondly, I really appreciate all of the conversations you all are having with the Planning Commission, where we have FCPS employees going and briefing the planning folks on individual projects. I would like, as a next step, Dr. Braber, and some mechanism for looping back with the Magisterial member and the at-larges about those conversations, because what we get is just a memo that says, with this plan, there's an expected yield of X amount of students, but there's not a lot of detail, and you have to go back and figure out what that actually means. So, I would suggest we need to do something a little bit more systematically.
Just one thing, we were just talking over the last week or two as a response that I had shared with this board about having not just the regular meetings with the RAS and Project Momentum around school academic issues, but also beginning a regular process of the RAS with facilities, meeting and going over just this kind of information as a team to really look at what the issues are, what's coming forward, and getting to some greater level of detail than just the summaries. So, we'll be glad to make that happen.
Excellent, thank you so much. And then, just with my remaining few seconds, would love to know a little bit more about the South County plan and when we can expect it. And then, some clarification, oops, sorry, about the impact of rental units versus own units. So, when someone buys a unit, are they, is there a higher yield of students with a permanent residence or with rentals? It would just be interesting for planning purposes. And then, something I've mentioned for a long time is the impact on the yield as these apartments get older and are not maintained, they become affordable housing, and then there tends to be a higher yield. And so, I know I've gone past my time, but I would like, at some point, for our two boards to work on this issue, because there's no proffer to be had, but there are students coming. Thank you.
No comments?
I don't, I don't think we really have a way to answer that, but I certainly understand the point. Now, you know, from a zoning standpoint, multifamily is multifamily. So, when we look at things, we don't differentiate, and in fact legally can't, between rental and ownership. I don't know if there's been any other work, but I'll leave that sort of in the capable hands of the other groups.
Ms. Palczek?
Thank you, and just briefly, I want to thank you for the presentation. I did want to let my colleagues know that we, I just reshared the document, the executive summary of the recommendations that are coming before the Schools Committee tomorrow night. This had been shared with you previously, I didn't receive any comments, so please try to share any you may have with us. And these recommendations do span everything from, you know, understanding that the primary funding is from the CIP with a little bit of support from proffers, because most of the funding for schools does come from the CIP. It does, at the point where we can no longer afford to buy land, recommend co-location, recommend, you know, additional collaboration between our different county partners. And I think the other important thing is, and I think, as you mentioned before, the competing needs is that infrastructure is schools, but it is also workforce and affordable housing, right? It is also transportation, so our families can get around the county. So, just, you know, I think the more, and I agree, the more we are working together and having these conversations, the more we realize that, you know, these are all, they're not mutually exclusive, right? I know we want support for our teachers and our parents to be able to attend schools and school activities. So, please do take a moment, it is not a very, very long document, but please share any comments with us before the meeting tomorrow, tomorrow evening.
Dr. Braber?
First, I want to thank the county for partnering with us and coming off with staff. What Jeff said earlier about, there's unprecedented collaboration that you all are doing with our folks, and we really appreciate it. Jeff, if I can just take a moment with the board here, because I think one of the things I'm hearing, how do we elevate, and it sounds like, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you're already thinking about that joint meeting with the board of supervisors, this topic being a real topic, because this is the big stuff. The big nugget, I saw them write and I wrote down, and I admit I was trying to do other, some other emails, so I didn't mean disrespect in trying to answer some emails from things that were already happening earlier today, just being honest. Three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand more folks by 2030? More units?
And that is regional, that's the COG estimate, so that's not Fairfax County just yet.
So, I love, I mean, anticipating a future question of board member, or the eight new board members are going to say, what's that breakdown for Fairfax? What's the breakdown by the average formula that you all say that you use? And what's the difference in yield if we use the school formula? And that number is what I would love to talk about when we have our joint board meeting, potentially. Because I think we've got to elevate how serious this is and what our plan is financially, strategically, facilities-wise, to get us moving forward. Because I feel like this is, this is a bigger wave than maybe we've all fully embraced, and certainly eight new board members coming on need to understand the full weight of it as well.
Madam Chair, can I respond to that? So, I think that it's the beginning of the conversation when the two boards meet, but it's not one and done. I believe that there has to be a more comprehensive joint planning between the two boards. And that's what this board member will be making a recommendation that we do.
And Mr. Plattenberg, just one question, do you need anything from this board? I understand, like, just listening, and I haven't kept up with the date, that the commission is about to have the vote on the recommendation. Do you need anything else from us right now? Does this board? Dr. Braber, I'm sorry for interrupting, but what Ms. Palczek mentioned, when, if you read the actual document, it talks about the recommendations, it speaks to each of the items that you're speaking of. So, when you look at that, and it does begat exactly what Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders mentioned, and that really is, you know, I'd say kind of a governance issue on to the future next steps of the governing bodies and what level they want to take it at, because it's been more organic and staff-to-staff. And then, the Planning Commission had the subcommittee, which was excellent and outstanding. So, it would be a natural evolution for the conversation where it's going to go. For us, we've done what we can. We think there is an opportunity for some real meat to be done, because when you read this, it acknowledges it, but it really, it basically, I think it provides an opening for future work.
I don't know where, oh. It won't take that long. Just thinking about this, and I know Ms. Hines and I, serving on the jet this year, recommendation, I guess, request of the future board would be to find the structure that will work for review and board work around some of these joint school board, county committees. Some of them, like the budget, I think we've done a really good job of working that out and having a process for that. But perhaps some of these other committees that are doing really, you know, critical work, this took over almost two years, I believe, to get to these recommendations, how we report back and get input from our colleagues on that, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Palczek. Are there any other board members who, there are a few folks who haven't spoken for the first time? Otherwise, I will give my comments. Okay, all right. So, I'm going to take this from a slightly different perspective, just because I, along with a few of my colleagues, have been able to participate with the boundary meetings, where Mr. Plattenberg has been there and a number others. And what became very clear to me is that the public does not understand how we got where we are, and why there are projections that don't seem to always pan out, and sometimes it involves what the county is able to do. So, I want to start on page seven, if I can, where it talks about the amendments to the new proffer legislation, I'm sorry, is that the right one? Right, and it says if proffers are, no, I'm sorry, that's the wrong page, I'm sorry. There's a page that said it has to be decided as of the time that the application is signed. That's the wrong one, I'm sorry, I thought I had it.
It's signed, July 119, below that.
Right, but what's determined, not for the proffer, I'm sorry, stop my time. Hold on, while I look for this. There's a thing in here that talks about how we make a determination as to what is appropriate, and it has to be as of the time of the application. Do you know what I'm talking about, Mr. Plattenberg? I'm seeing a blank face. Yes, that is it. So, can we talk a little bit about how that creates problems in terms of the projections? And I was able to talk with, during our planning meeting for this, about how we're projecting that, but then the actual building may not occur for many years, and that creates some complications. So, if we could talk a little bit about that, I'd appreciate it.
I mean, really, it's strictly what you said. I mean, when you have a forecast, and you have a forecast, and then an impact, and then an addressing of that impact by the future development, what actually may occur in, in some instances, and we've had conversations about what may occur short-term and then long-term, it was, the conversation got, especially even at the subcommittee level, it got really kind of caught in a quagmire about, well, the impact is the impact of the new development only. And the law particularly was pretty explicit about identifying what the true impact of that development. So we were able to, when we took a look at student yields and the cost per student, we were able to identify, and having a capital cost, we, on square foot, we were able to identify the impact of what each student, and what that square footage would provide. However, the conversation got into much more depth about, well, when you take a look at an area, when it initially comes out, and let's say it's cost prohibitive for large families to get there, and then shifts happen amongst the county, and that, either those subdivisions either turn over, as was mentioned about some that are happening, like we talked about areas in Vienna, for example, that was mentioned, where you have knockdown rebuilds, and then younger families move in with more children, there isn't the impact that, to accommodate for things such as that. So it's really at a place and time of discussion, and I think it's, it's the best we have, but I don't know if anybody wants to add any more about how we got in that conversation.
And I, I think it is, it's more than just the proffer legislation. So this, this proffer legislation very specifically talked about how much you could ask for, and capacity at the time of zoning. But in general, with rezonings, there's, there's a reasonableness test, and there's a nexus test. So the question of what you're asking a developer to offset is the impact that they are having. You see, you can't say, well, you're, you're coming in here, and this school is already overcrowded, so you have to fix it if you're only adding two students to the school. That said, we also, we'd like our projections to all be as good as they can, and, and we do our best, but things do change over the, over time. One thing I'm hoping, as our recording gets better, so with the new PLUS system and the tracking, one of the things we tried to, have been trying to do in Tysons, and hopefully can expand across the county, is, is looking at, sort of, what is that process? How many things, how many, somebody mentioned, I think we men, you mentioned the Huntington area, how much, how much is sort of out there that has been zoned, but hasn't taken the next step of going through site plan? How long might that take? Once something's gone through site plan, when, when can we reasonably expect things to get built? Now, obviously, again, everything that got zoned before 2008, then, you know, if it was, there's a lot of it that sort of sat for a long time. So, things are still going to happen that make that imperfect, that's why we call it projections, and, and it's not absolutes, but we're, we're trying to sort of get the tracking in place, so we can at least have a better understanding of sort of how those things go. But again, it goes, it does go back to, we're reacting to when the development community is ready to build the units, and we can make our best guess of that. We do, I will say, in terms of sort of the proffer condition, we are very careful, not just with schools, but with everything, if we are looking at a cash proffer, to put some sort of escalation. In the schools formula, we actually build it in, because that formula is adjusted every year, so we build it into the formula itself. If it's something where someone has just, in some cases, some people don't want to proffer to that, and they do a, just a flat rate, we certainly escalate that, so that at the time, it's actually given, you know, somebody who proffered $100 per unit might have seemed a lot in 1982, is not a lot now, but that, that kind of thing, we at least can adjust for to the best of our abilities.
I guess where I'm trying to get is that, it's very clear to me that the public, as they're trying to understand, deal with just overcrowding at McLean High School, and this has little to do with the county, in the sense that we're trying to deal with things comprehensively, they're not understanding, A, that we're impacted by the Dillon Rule, that it's developer-driven. One of the questions I took a picture of, that I thought was priceless, is what are they doing to stop this development? And I understand, having been on the Planning Commission, that we can't really do that. So, I guess, you know, and that was part of the reason, when we had our meeting with the County Board of Supervisors just a few weeks ago, that I mentioned, we did need to have this type of meeting with the Board of Supervisors. I understand that they have the authority to make this decision, and I am under no illusion regarding that, but certainly, I think, at a minimum, we need to work toward better community understanding of what we're dealing with. And I think that that is a huge problem. And I saw a lot of blame coming from our community about who's making these projections, and who made the mistake, and a lot of times, I think it's public education. You want to say?
I would, I would echo that in every shape, form, and fashion. It's not just schools, it's with everything. It's with transportation, and we'd love, we, we spend a lot of time trying to figure out, how do you get people knowledgeable and interested before there's something happening in their backyard, but they're upset about? And we'd love to have you guys help us with that, and, and any opportunities. We've done some land use universities, they call it sometimes, and some Development 101. It's hard to get people, there's a lot going on, it's hard to get people out, so, and if you guys have any great ideas about how to sort of reach people and educate people, we'd love to work with you, and we'll bring you.
I'll, I'll use my last 20-something seconds to say, now that we have people's attention in a particular part of our community, because they're concerned about overcrowding, I think it is the perfect opportunity to begin educating the public as to what has to happen to deliver services in our county. Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. I've had many of those meetings with that same community, but you know, until you have everybody's attention, they don't all come. All right. The other question that I have, and you probably don't have an answer for, but I know that in, from the Board of Supervisors, and Planning, and Land Use, you all work very hard, and do a very good job, I must say. And again, thank you for coming. When a new employment center, such as Tysons, and everything along the Silverline, when that is planned, I know that when the Board of Supervisors are working very hard on, on, you know, residential, and high-rise, and all the rest of that, I know in the community meetings, it was, this will only have an impact on the new high-rise apartments, and the new, and I know those of us who deal with that, I think it's going to have a spillover effect. And again, when you have planned, when the intent is to increase employment opportunities, particularly with rapid transit, you have a huge spillover with existing housing, particularly older existing housing, which then becomes more affordable. And in our projections, because that's not teardowns, it's not necessarily new housing, but it is simply interest, young families who are going to be employed in those centers move in. And sometimes it's just moving into the older existing housing. And that's also part of what I'm seeing, in sort of the greater Tysons area. And we never quite plan on that. I mean, we understand the turnover of communities where there has not been any change in the employment area, because as schools, we see those, you know, everybody ages out, the young families come back in. But I think that in the county planning, I don't think that we, at least it appears to me, that we don't necessarily take into account the impact of new job centers on just existing residential. I don't know how you project that, but I think that that, I think that's something also that we are experiencing in, in the greater Tysons area, is this isn't necessarily new housing, it's existing. So, good place to work, close to work, walk to work, and take the metro to work, and they're working.
Any comments? Okay. Ms. McLaughlin has a go-back. If there are any other colleagues that would like to make a comment, please let me know.
So, just again, going to the conversation about the student projection formula, I just feel very strongly that there seems to have been sort of a disconnect between, how do we get past the concerns that the, the universal, one-size-fits-all formula projection that the county has in place right now, that the schools have to comply with when they bring the projections to a developer's proposal, is not matching up with the accuracy of the yield those projects bring. So my first next step I would really like for our staff to do is a 10-year look-back that says, okay, of the projects where we used the county's formula, and we did a projection of how many students it would yield, how accurate was that? I mean, that, to me, is a way, as the, if we want the Schools Committee to be able to make a recommendation that's as accurate as possible on any changes to the formula, the Planning Commission's then going to vote on it, then the Board of Supervisors is going to vote on it, why aren't we using some data to help us decide if, where this universal formula came from, and how close did it help us to do the right thing? I know that there's a recommendation that maybe you're going to refine the formula, well, whatever the refinement to that formula is, if, also, we can use data to show, using this new formula, in the look-back, we can see, it would have gotten us this closer to the projections. Because in the end, we have to have, at least, the Board, the Planning Commission, who then pretty much advises the Board of Supervisors what to do on these developments, to be as knowledgeable as possible. And the Planning Commissioners tell me all the time, look, what you guys bring to us, and you put into the documents, we take that as, that's what the number's going to be. And if it's different than what your internal formula was telling us, then why weren't we getting that? So I'm just looking at, making sure we really position ourselves well. When we talk about educating the public 101, what I will tell you is, a resident who's lived here over 25 years, and recently had two projects coming into the Braddock District, when we revise our comprehensive plan with comprehensive plan amendments, that is when the developers end up having the power. Because if something's zoned for residential, under whatever number it is, it's when we change our comprehensive plan, that then we allow developers to come in and build more dense housing. And that's where the public doesn't realize, that they need to be speaking up and sharing with their Board of Supervisors, the balance between smart growth and basically problematic growth. And our roadways, as everyone knows here, is some of the worst traffic in the, in the country, that's my biggest worry alongside the impact on our schools, so. Can that look-back be done? Can the look-back be done?
Dr. Brabran had a comment, I believe.
Yeah, Jeff, I mean, this has come up before, as a theme about just trying to get the accuracy of our projection compared to the accuracy of the county's. I don't know whether we have a 10-year look-back availability, but we can certainly try to go back and see what we do have, and see how close our numbers matched up with the actual numbers.
I'll say a couple of things. First of all, we'll, we'll take a look and see what we can and can't do, but I'll say, in terms of methodology, projection methodology, which we do consistently with around the region, the planning staff here, and it is county-wide, and I know a lot of people have issue with that, and that's been articulated, but when you look at the pair, comparison, we are within 2% of our projection being off. That is more narrow. In other words, we do a better job on our projection accuracy than any other school division around here, and I've been a part of the other school divisions. That being said, it's division-wide. So when people ask about locality, and looking back for, as it pertains to this conversation, and the projections, and what's done for land use, we'll take a look to see what we can provide. There's so many factors that come in, when I looked at this last time, with boundary adjustments that have gone on, program changes that have been made, and other factors that come into play, but I think I understand the essence of what you're looking for, Ms. McLaughlin. I'll see if there's something I can provide that will provide clarity around what you're looking for. You've, you've been quite clear, I think, on this issue.
Well, no, stated differently, what I had said is, what were our projections at the time? And that was the act, the actual yield of what we got from that development. So it's not your projections versus the county projections. We've had to use only the county standard formula, but Jeff, you do have an internal formula that can be different to say what we project.
I'll see what I can do. I think, I think I got what you're looking for.
Okay. Well, if that's our last comment, I think we had just a couple of next steps. Okay. Janie, are you comfortable with 205?
Yes, and even if that answer comes after I'm no longer on the board, if somebody could share it with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, Karen, Ms. Corbett Sanders, 206?
206 is fine, but there's one that's missing, which is, include greater peer-to-peer discussions on planning between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, rather than the School Board only going through the Schools Committee of the Planning Commission. Including a discussion at the joint board meeting in January.
May I add to that?
Absolutely.
With respect to, and we may want to have discussions regarding how we help to educate the community regarding this process.
Right. But I want this to be an ongoing discussion.
I understand. Trust me, it's ongoing education.
I know, but ongoing discussion between the two boards.
Okay. All right.
Can we also add the Planning Commission to that, because I think?
Planning Commission for, oh, to be included in the Committee of the PC?
So between, I think it's School Board, Board of Supervisors, and the Planning Commission, correct, is what we're looking at? I guess some of it, I know in the Schools Committee, the Planning Commissioners have said they would like to see this additional information that our staff has, that's more accurate than this countywide yield formula.
Sure. I'm seeing this, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm seeing this as a beginning for our discussion to try to figure out how best to achieve these things. Okay. And Ms. McLaughlin, I think you had number 207?
Yeah, I mean, that, I think Jeff said he understood what I was asking for in terms of student projections.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate the folks coming over from the county to help educate us more. It's great to see you guys. Hopefully, we went through it. Yes, thank you very much. And I will turn this back over to our chair.
Great. If we can take a five-minute break, and then we will transition to the governance discussion.